Bob, you got it, you record.
We're not going in again. This meeting is started, we already were saying, the pledge of allegiance. This meeting is being recorded, is anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, continue. We have the minutes of May 31st, they say. No, so do you have the notes?
I don't see them.
Your recollection, Don? We have a management letter from our auditors. Just to summarize, the Scanlon Corporation's been doing an audit of the town finances for many years. It really reflects that the town is run well. I would appreciate the opportunity to have our town accountant, Cliff Bombard, and town treasurer here as well to speak to it. So we've asked them to come back at a further date in either July or August. And we'll review at that time any recommendations from the auditors. But suffice it to say that they find the town is in good condition, Don, you recall we've had these the past couple of years. They really have never found any issue at all, and I would say this is even better than ones we've seen in the past. We, master plan update, I believe the board had taken the position before that we were waiting, we're letting the planning board run with that. Right, they're doing that, so really, if that's the update, that's it at this point.
I do not, I do not have anything at this point.
Okay, when you have the opportunity then just keep checking with Madison or Joanne and see how it's going, please. The fire chief is here with two candidates. Steve Poole, welcome.
Thank you for seeing us this evening. We had a recruitment night a while back, and these two gentlemen filled out applications pretty quickly. Admit all their criteria to get here in front of the door. Ryan Fitzgerald lives on Summers Road, he's a full-time student west of the state. He has an EMT license. He's just received his job at National Ambulance, hard time. He's interested in doing EMS work with our department. So I'm just looking for the board to accept him as probationary EMS firefighter. He wants to try firefighting out, he's not sure he's gonna be it, but he definitely is.
So you're gonna be designating him probationary EMS primarily?
And firefighter because he will-
So he'll learn the ropes as well, yeah.
I don't want to include himself in the committee.
Okay, we ask this every time, like, advancing years, I always forget. What is the, right, what is the training they go through there?
So they'll go through our current training at the fire station, which we meet every Monday nights after holidays. And some weekends, which will break that down to PPE, Klingon SCBA's. Again, the basics of firefighting with our equipment, our engines, pumping, driving. They'll be able to go from there, they'll be able to go to the Calhoun Theater Academy, which we have three cadets graduating from tonight. And he'll be able to get other additional training to street with fire department, fire academy after that. And what we do is, is once they come up on a year's time, we go through as officers, make sure they've met all their goals, and make sure they're proficient at their things they need to be before they go into academy or just monitoring.
You guys, both of them came from the recruitment academy or recruitment night?
Awesome, Ryan, welcome. Michael, of course.
This is Michael Patrick. We have both his sons, Chris and Brian, they're our new dependents this evening. They're both on the fire department with us, so this would be a trifecta for the end of the fire department.
Dad, you being an eye on the kids, is that what you're saying?
If you want to see where they're really going by the way.
So, Michael is interested in being a driver operator of the engine for us, which is very important because if we have a skillful person such as Josh Scurrling standing over there in the doorway, I don't want him having to drive the truck, operate the truck, and I could be using him as interior firefighter or other aspects of the fire ground. So Michael wants to volunteer his time to come in and be the driver operator when there is a call. And that's the only position that he's interested in.
And the training for that would still be, what do you get additional training, just in case something happened, hey, can you go get that hose, and he'll know what hose you're talking about, stuff like that?
Yeah, so, so, good question. He'll be trained on each individual apparatus, the location of all the equipment, he'll be able to operate the pump. I'm a believer that he needs to know where everything is on the truck in case someone comes out from the fires and he says, hey, I need to get the fan, I forgot where it is, so he'll know exactly where to call that firefighter, where it is.
But his primary job role will be driving.
Or he'll hear it on the radio and get that cabinet door open for that. So yeah, he has a lot of experience, he's retired from Westville already, Department of Defense. So he has firefighting experience, so he's not new to it.
Do you have access to those helicopters if we need them or anything like that?
Unfortunately, no.
Or you can't set. That's fine.
So, since his primary role will be driving, are you gonna make sure he still understands the operations of the rest of the department in our workings, just in case if something does happen and he needs to get involved in a higher capacity?
Absolutely, well, I mean, we want to, if he is a driver, he is responsible for that truck, and he's not gonna be buried from that. But he does have that experience already, but yeah, he's got very good understanding of firefight operations as well.
And I'm sure if you get something wrong, somebody might tell you.
Not like that, Dad.
So your recommendation chief is that we like to appoint both of these probationary status. Ryan would be just, well, he'd be EMS as well as firefighter. And technically, he'd be probationary firefighter. Internally, his focus would be on driving.
Said it well, second thought.
All those in favor? Chief, could you give us two seconds and tell us about your graduates tonight?
Graduates tonight is John Tadger, who's graduating, and Mike Wass, and Nicole Abell.
And about a year, how long will it be before we get the word on these two gentlemen, same thing?
As-
Graduates. I mean, they're going for training, and do they go for that type of-
Which tier, the two here in front of us tonight or the two over there?
Well, I guess the two over there and then these two.
So Brian already has, I'm sorry, Chris already has Air Force firefighter training.
Grandfather, so to speak, yeah.
I'm assuming Brian's interested in going the next academy class, which we have not yet, that would be-
Maybe you guys can share, right?
The two that graduate, are they considered no longer probationary at that point because they graduated from the academy? Oh, three, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, well, that will be an officer's decision. We'll still sit down, officer, and discuss how long they've been on the fire department, how many calls they've made, and how much fines that they are charging for. It's not a, it's not a yes or no.
So it certainly sounds like your open recruitment night, you know, wore fruit for you, brought people in.
Yes, I'm still trying to focus on the people in town, I'm sure there's people who want to help out. And if we get the people in our town to help us out, obviously, our response time is definitely in town. And we get to the mercy of ourselves.
Not only the response time, I think the pride of community also comes out at that point too, you know. You live in town, your neighbor helping neighbor, for sure. It's good to see that, so.
No, it's great, though, I gotta be there for stuff and life of graduation.
Thank you both for stepping up and helping out the town.
Thank you for keeping an eye on the kids, appreciate that. As a father, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for helping us grow.
Thank you.
Next, we have the chairperson of the Park and Rec Department. Come on down. You're the next contestant. Right over there, where's Chief Poole?
Am I sitting in Bob's spot? Can I run Zoom?
Oh, there.
How are you guys? So, I was just pulling up my numbers.
You are coming to us?
Well, I wrote a letter about ARPA funds to see if we could use some to get somebody in the office as a park director or something along those titles. So, we're looking for potentially a full-time person to come up with new ideas, to implement programs, and keep the office running and the parks running. Because the board members are struggling with doing it all with our full-time jobs.
Backtrack for a second, how is the board running right now? How, your vacancies are, who's on the board currently?
So we have myself, we have Dan Slattery, we have Eric Jacobson, and Brett Castle. So we have one vacancy as of right now. Somebody is coming in tomorrow that has an interest, so we'll see. I'll let you know.
Well, I'll say personally, I certainly support the idea of a rec director. Back in the late 90s, my wife, who was chair of the park for at that time, really worked with the other park members, the board selection, and got a rec director funded by the town. And I think the first one was Theodore Murray, and then Cindy Coughlin, and some people may recall Jay Fenelison as well. And then, of course, the, whatever you want to call it, the act fell in 05-06, and that position was eliminated. So I think it certainly may be time to investigate restoring that position, especially as the board has more things they can do. It's maybe more than Kristen could handle. When the, when it ended, we had a rec director and a full-time clerk at the same time, running everything.
So, I will say personally, though, I may not agree with this funding structure. I think it's something that should be a position funded at town meeting. So there was a discussion at our last meeting about how to go about all of this. Because, not sure, we wanted to go to a town meeting with a lot of evidence, data saying how much we needed this position. So we were looking to say, try and trial a year round, three-year position. So that way we could go to the town and say, here's some evidence. Had it, now can you support us moving forward with it? So at first, we were looking for a grant or something, and even I talked to Bob, he mentioned the ARPA. So that's why I wrote the letter.
I think the thing with ARPA is, I don't think you can directly fund a position. I think you could fund government services, but to fund a salary, I think would kind of, and Bob would have to clarify the specifics of that, so it might be a little tough to follow a salary position off of that. Grant funding, though, I mean, maybe, maybe there's something, something to that, though.
So, that way we could try to get it started as soon as possible. And with the grant, we have to wait till the grant money comes in.
Right.
But then, we can even start the process once we find out about it. That way we can get somebody on board, get the information through the town, so we can go to a town meeting saying how successful it was and how important it is.
I know you threw out some numbers here, have you looked into other towns, or even in the Collins study, where a parks director would fall into the face scale?
I didn't look in the Collins, but I called, I searched other towns, surrounding towns. They only find the assistant park directors, and those with their salaries are around $10,000 to $50,000.
How easily you think you could find somebody? I'm sure a lot of people now are already into their positions, right, because of the summer.
Well, is this something you want to continue to work with Bob on, explore grant funding opportunities?
Absolutely.
I mean, like I say, personally, I'm not quite sure how we would make this fit into the ARPA scheme, and Don, any thoughts on that?
I don't think you can, because they don't allow you to pay pension, they don't allow you to pay into pension.
Oh, I understand, I expected that.
So that person would have to be part of the pension system, which, if it's a $50,000 salary, it's 35% more added onto that, and actually talk to them, $70,000, really $70,000. What's your programming now?
So we have the summer program.
You're gonna do the camp, right?
Yes.
And you got the spray park going.
Yes, and then the rentals. We have soccer that finishing up, and T-ball and baseball coming up. And we have all soccer that we're getting ready.
And what's the participation rate?
The numbers have dwindled over the years. It's hard to fill the team. There are a lot of the sports lately, which is another reason why we want the director to try to get the numbers back up.
What do you think that is, besides less kids in the right book?
Hardly less kids, and we can't get them to the schools to do any advertisement. They've gone to the electronic backpack. So I don't know how much our parents are seeing the flyers. I know as a parent, I didn't really see the flyers electronically as much as I did when they came home in the backpacks. So, I think there's a little bit of everything.
I think from my experience, being a parent involved in some of the sports last year and whatnot, it was tough, I think, to try to educate parents and the students, put the programs together. And I think the board was at all that could do to try to make everything work, and just kind of band-aiding everything in for programming.
Is a lot of it the parents? You know, I mean, the kids, we all go to all kinds, my kids, we just went two straight hours a day, and they came home, it was good.
You make choices now, basically.
Kids are probably home on their cell phones and on the tablets and doing things and not getting out as much. Not sure.
But you look at other communities, though, they have some strong sports programs, Tallins, Connecticut, Ellington, and even Wilbraham has some stronger teams.
But with the rec director, again, this, you know, has been my pet peeve. Back in the day, they focused on, let's focus on things that are not supposed to be youth sports oriented.
Correct.
Where the program is for, you know, the athletic, you know, who wants to do volleyball or-
Knitting.
Knitting, that's nice. But we had the Fall Festival, we had movie nights for the kids, we had, I mean, the director would explore more of those type things, right?
And Rob was gone for a while.
The wiffle ball tournament.
And now we got that back.
But also, we had Ra.
Well, let's say Ra handled the sport then, Park Rec could then do things from eight to 80 for the-
You have to be modern history.
Stickball, is that what you're saying?
Pickleball, it's a pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah, that's hard enough.
So, those are things we'd like to start doing. We tried to bring in some art programs, but haven't been able to find a place for them to even go.
Yeah, that's a hard task, it's lasted two years, too.
You know, access to space.
I think that's why you're looking for that director, right, so you guys can all have these more discussions and have somebody that can facilitate the daily aspect of the program.
Certainly, I think we're in favor of the approach to get a grant to start the process, I mean, I just don't-
I don't know if that's gonna happen, but absolute guy, I think the next town meeting is the place to go.
And I can, like I say, I can provide, I have a lot of documentation of what was done back in the 90s to support the idea of a director back then, happy to provide that.
Okay, I agree. So we can try to get the ball rolling and get more events happening every day.
Just on a side note, I was at a birthday party at the park yesterday, and Steve was there doing trash and fixing swings, and he's doing a great job, the park looked great.
And then Mark.
Yeah, Steve Bennett.
He's our maintenance.
He looked great.
Getting, trying to get it ready for the summer.
You gonna get the bathroom fixed first?
Uh, we are in the process.
Okay, I noticed there was lacking some facilities.
So we're trying to get the door fixed. We've been contacting some and trying to get the boys' bathroom ready.
Tree ward.
Tree ward.
Right.
It's being done tomorrow.
Excellent. Do you need to, does ConCon need to come back and investigate?
I don't think so, they just gave them the parameters and restrictions of what you guys had, right?
Right. We passed that along to the company, and they're all set.
And they're gonna go within the budget.
Next one.
DLG tree, DLG, yeah.
Do you remember how much that was budgeted for offhand?
15.
How much was budgeted for? I don't know how much it was budgeted. So, it's under that.
Okay, great.
How much under?
A hundred.
Under is a relative, relative term, yeah.
All right.
Great.
Anything else?
I think we're good, and good luck with your interview tomorrow night.
Do you hear of anybody else that are my way?
I had a couple of people say maybe, but I'm still trying to come down and see you.
I heard you were working, I talked to somebody.
Oh, really?
Yep.
There's also lobbying for water commissioner, he's shilling for every board, every-
Trying, we need community involvement around here.
Yes, I received a phone call today when I was in Minneapolis.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Great, Carrie, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, guys. We'll see you later.
Did not happen today. Hey, Sherry, how are you? Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking of the much coffee this, which was the estimate before we went forward with the work. So I spoke, I did call Don Beez or the tree to say, you know, why was there this discrepancy, you know, you know, Dana. I said, Dana came out, took a look, he said it'll be $5,000. He said, you know, I don't know, you know, when Dana looked at it or whatever. He said, but when I walked in there, and this is true, he said, I said to you, we need to have a log truck, we need to have an aerial lift truck, the charges go by the deck. If we can get a reasonable amount done in one day, then it will come in under the $5,000. He said, but looking at this, you're looking at two to four days' work. So, at the end of one day, it wasn't even begun to be started. And, you know, this is something that has been going on for a while, since we took possession of this land, and it's been over 20 years, every year I'm begging the highway department, can you please come up here? This is town land. Oh, you know, we're busy, our schedule's full, you know, and we did, we did, we do a lot with volunteers, but there's only so much, and it eventually got out of control. One of the things about accepting the, what was called self-help grants at the time, which is now the land grant from the state, is that you have to have a sign in the front. We had a sign, but you couldn't even see it, because at that point, all of the overgrown brush totally obscured the Scott's side. You couldn't even see that there was a stone wall along there. There was so much crickers and brush that it was beyond what any volunteers could do. And then there was the issue of all these trees falling over. If you take a drive up South Road, and you look at the wires at a parallel to the conservation land, there are slices, like every two to four feet. Because trees, over the past 20 years, have been falling, taking up power. I narrowly missed getting hit by a tree that came out the Saturday after Thanksgiving when I was driving my daughter. But had that, had I been 10 minutes earlier, or like, you know, I would have been a casualty. And so, you know, I just, it was a dangerous situation. And, you know, once we had started and we looked at it, we just said, look. All we're budgeted for is $5,000, I got an emergency over trust to cover it. But, you know, just going back to the town to say, if it is a lot of money, we are an all-volunteer group. We spend so much of the money that we do raise on so many other things, on appraisals and surveys and things that are required called baseline documentation reports. Thousands of dollars have to go, once you have this, and we're under conservation, we've taken on the responsibility. And we have great people that are maintaining the trails, that have put in bog bridges, that have put it on the All Trails app, that have actually have those little URL codes so you can scan the trails on your phones. So we're doing quite a bit, and as it stands now, there are 40 stumps that have to be ground down. We have not only volunteers, but we have neighbors, the Smiths, who have volunteered, and they mow the fields down there, said, I can't get in there to clear all that brush, to keep, to clear that till we get those stumps ground down. That is gonna be another $5,000 to $6,000 anyhow to get 40 stumps ground down. I'm not putting that on the town, that will come to the land trust to try to get that done. And once we get that done, then I think we will have a reasonable shot at maintaining this land. But it's basically land that got under control, I'm not in progress, so I don't know why all these trees get falling.
Well, a couple of things here, the board can chirp in, you know, with their memory. We had this discussion, and it was gonna be a division between basically what was in the towns right away, and then what was around the parking lot, and in the land trust, whatever railhead, whatever's falling. And all these trees on this bill are in the part the town talked about doing, which was near the road only. There are 40 stumps in that part, near the road?
And against a neighboring property, it kind of goes like this. All of the, if we look at the stone wall, the trees were either going into the street, which for most of them, or falling into the Smith's property. You know, which, which is kind of our responsibility too.
And then the timing obviously bothers us.
Yeah.
We put this money in the budget last spring, spring of '21, went to town meeting. You got a quote in October.
Right.
We're hearing about this bill seven months later.
Well-
You had an opportunity to come to us when you had the quote, saying, oh my gosh, we need an extra $6,000. We could have gone to the special town meeting in the fall and perhaps appropriated more money into that account. But crickets until the work was done, oh, by the way, here's the bill.
Well, I did reach out, or somebody reached out to Bob Mock, or I can go look at the email chain, about getting some of this work done. So when we, when we were hit with this, we were saying, oh, you know, there's American Rescue Plan, there's other things that they, that this possibly cover. But we just didn't get a response back, and, and our treasurer sent like three or four emails.
I think that email chain referred to the original $5,000, which there was talk about, oh, it could be possibly a reserve account, and then the town went ahead and funded it in the tree ward and budget. Yeah, this was the original.
That was the original.
That was the original estimate, whatever, we took care of that. Okay, it's not gonna be a reserve fund, we'll put it in the budget. Then, in the fall, you get a real quote, if you will. It's much more, and we had an opportunity to go to the fall town meeting. But the information at that time wasn't shared, we can't find a record of that being shared with Bob or this office.
Well, yeah, so I think that, you know, I can't, there were too many people involved. I think Judy said something to Bob after some meeting, she doesn't recall when, you know. So I, so again, I apologize because I wasn't in on, I mean, I had things going on in my own mind so that I wasn't following this as closely as I normally do. I just have been involved in a, in a professional situation that consumed all of my time. I'm still, I'm still working, but I had to go through a sale of my practice and all kinds of other stuff. So I was knee-deep in other issues, so I kind of backed off from the land trust stuff during that time. So I kind of backed off from the land trust up during that time, thinking that other people were taking up the mantle, and they weren't. So, you know, I kept saying to people, did you, did you reach out? Did you mention this to him? So, uh, you know, Ben was told that Bob had issues with his son that was in California. They didn't want to bother him. And so, you know, things got a little out of control and I didn't, I, I have not been as hands-on as I should have been. So, uh, so that was the explanation for why that took so long, um, to get it here. I thought that other people were doing that, who obviously, you know, weren't doing it. I thought that our treasurer had sent, presented the whole eleven thousand to Bob way back when, and apparently she didn't, because I told her to, uh, to send that over. Send all the bills over. So again, I, you know, I just emailed her and said, did you send this? And she said, yes, and I didn't have the original chain.
So Dr. Himmelstein, on the, so this estimate, this proposal here, uh, from October eighteenth, twenty twenty?
Yeah.
That's roughly the five thousand dollars. Actually, it's less than five thousand dollars.
Right, that's for one day's work.
But then he's, so, that's, is it at the bottom, estimate two, excuse me, two to four days worth of work? Right.
So that's, that's where the budget plan sits. So, I mean, obviously, we could have kept going.
So this is, this is, so this three thousand, something, three thousand?
So he gave you an estimate, said it'll be five thousand.
If he cut to it in one day.
Okay, then he goes ahead and takes extra days. But I'm sorry, if this was home, he said, well, you gave me a quote.
No, no, because he told me right at the get-go. He goes, he goes, this to me looks like two to four days' work. I can see what I can get done. Maybe in one day, you'll be happy with what I've done and you can tell me to quit. But in one day, there were too many that were about to fall.
But I understand that, but you had no more money and you went and spent one you didn't have.
Well, I, the, the land trust covered it. And so we, with a hope, reimbursement. And, you know, at that time, um, I was under the, you know, again, I was a little disconnected, but I was under the impression that American Rescue Plan funds that had come to the town, these were the kinds of things that it could be used for because certainly during COVID, this land, I mean, the parking lot was full at the time. You never saw so many people, uh, using this land. And actually, the land used has really picked up and continues its use. So this was something that was, you know, people were, for, for several months, couldn't go anywhere. So where did they go? They went hiking with families. And so that's when this land was used a lot. So I thought, maybe this is a crossover.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought CARES money was more for COVID, or ARPA money was more for infrastructure restoration.
Right, so I.
So I think the CARES, which unfortunately ended last year, would have been applicable towards COVID relief. We can't touch CARES money.
Okay, so what about with infrastructure?
It'd be tough to justify this as infrastructure, not getting into a railhead. Yeah, so. I think your option is to, if you're looking for reimbursement from the town, just honestly look possibly to the fall town meeting and ask the town to appropriate free cash for reimbursement. Maybe, maybe talk to Doug about CPA money as a reimbursement. CPA has done reas, reimbursements for the housing authority after they've spent money to reimburse them.
Yeah, the water faucets, right. The water faucets, right.
Water things, the locks, the locks, the breaker boxes, things like that. That might be because there's a history of CPA supporting Minnesota Land Trust.
Yeah, I don't know if this will support, yeah. I, I don't know if you got the email. It started at six fifteen. These are our neighbors, um, so, um, I shot you an email today because.
Oh, the last one was six?
I know, yeah, yeah, I shot you one today.
We run a very efficient ship here. Zoom right along.
So anyhow, um, all right, so the answer is no from the town unless we go to the fall town meeting.
Right, so.
Unless we go to the fall town meeting.
You heard Sherry say, you heard, uh, sorry. You heard Carrie saying, they were taking, you know, we put twenty thousand in, five for your project, fifteen for the park, and the park is using your money.
But CPA is a potential, so.
I don't know if CPA money will cover this kind of work.
No, we, I mean, you bought the announced maintenance, twelve minutes.
I don't know if they do maintenance. Yeah, I will have to check. It, it's pretty, uh, defined as to what we can use it. We can use it for purchase of land, but I don't know if you can use it for any kind of maintenance.
You can also use it for limited recreation, which we've done, and if you're clearing this recreation accessible land, I think that's.
Well, it's not accessible, really.
Well, I thought you just, there's danger in it.
Oh, no, I meant.
And you couldn't access it.
I, I, I'm thinking of, we can't have access.
I think that's a, if it's not the open space thing, it's the limited recreation thing. It's like you said.
Not fond of open spaces.
Yeah, it could be a combination of both. I think between that, those two things, you talk to, who's the guru at the state? Stu? Who's the guy that sends out the emails all the time with a reference to how much money? And we had such a bonus year for CPA. Reimbursement level is almost thirty percent.
Well, I'll see if there's any way that it can get funded through recreation and the land space.
Talk to Doug, sure.
And then you have the opposite going to the special, right?
Well, sure.
All right, so when, if, if CPA's a no, when do I have to get something special?
Oh, gosh, we'll be asking for things in September.
September.
All right, I will do that.
So is your practice?
Yeah, I'm still working. I, I'm not retiring, but, um, it's been very stressful. It's a tournament's been there.
Oh, my gosh.
A lot of stuff going on personally, so I just kind of didn't follow it as closely as I normally do.
You've done enough.
I, I'm exhausted. Totally, uh, I'd like to.
Well, we can support you with your application to, to the CPA. We'd be happy to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Hey, would you want to be on the board or committee or anything while you're here?
We got openings.
Not right now.
Nobody gets out without that question.
John's looking for another spot.
Is he? That's true. You've got, now you've got free time. Um, for next week's meeting, I want to talk about stormwater, uh, and, you know, what our thoughts are going forward with that. Next meeting, which I think is the eleventh.
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
Okay. So, release, project release. Uh, I know we have a, a draft from Rose. We have an answer back from.
I, I saw it on Thursday. And a part of the grant is that she read it, she was not happy with the language about being, the money being given to her, her to follow her. I don't know if it was just too much for her to deal with at the moment. I'm not really sure, but, um, she had some concerns. I invited her, I called her, asked her to come, and I didn't pay this attention.
Okay, is this, is this something we can, it sounds like a bit of confusion. I think if she could make arrangements to sit down with Bob, perhaps Rose on the phone at the same time and just, what are her concerns and let's really try and, because this has been kicking back and forth and.
Easy.
We have a potential to get this, make her life better, make the house life better and just.
She is, she wants.
Right. And if need be, maybe Craig as chair of the board health could sit in and just, you know, then he can relay back to the board. Right, yeah, pick a date for that. Okay, let's just put this to bed. I think we're making more of it than, uh, there were minutes listed.
Yeah, I didn't include them, I guess.
Okay, well, we won't talk about it, that's fine. And we do have a request for a birthday party at the VFW on July second. I guess we better act on this.
What, what?
Times?
Usual twelve to twelve.
What year birthday party?
Thirtieth.
No, no, anything beyond my birthday.
Yeah, that's a wide range.
But you're invited. It says it right there.
Oh, okay.
So we have a request for a, uh, one general license for a thirtieth birthday party at the VFW on July second from twelve to twelve.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? How about, uh, selectmen reports?
Um, I got two variances to report. Um, variance one would be sixteen Old Coach Road. They're looking for a reduction in separation between septic absorption systems and high groundwater reduction of one foot.
Is that that white house on the corner or that blue one next to it?
I'm not sure, actually.
I didn't mix up.
Yeah. But, um, Finn signed off on it. Looks good in his book, so.
I'm like a motion to, make a motion to, uh, recommend the variance for sixteen Old Courts, Old Coach Circle as recommended by the Health and.
Very good.
All there? Uh, we also have a variance for five sixty-one Main Street, a reduction of one foot separation between inlet and outlet trees and high groundwater.
And Ben is okay with it?
Ben is okay with it and signed off.
They move, uh, the variance places to a main street, it's moved by the, uh, Ben McCallum as covered.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
That little white one? Before the circle.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, we had strategic planning last week. We finally put that to rest. We, uh, mission statement, vision statement, and core values are all completed. Mars is going to go through and reformulate everything and bring it back for presentation.
Uh, quickly, you bring up a good point. We did complete the, uh, contract negotiations with the unit A and C, and you know what I mean by that, yeah. I think the number, the numbers that were approved were inside the budget approved this year. So, uh, I can get, and I've asked Aaron to provide a summary to the board of what that means. And Don, your question was, is this going to be inside? Yes, it is. Um, and if you'd like to ask Michelle and, uh, the committee members to give us an update on negotiations. I think at the close, it's going to be fine, yes. I don't like buying them a house or anything like that. I wouldn't know yet.
Yes.
This is a work I'm on my cash. Planning has a special meeting because of some timing issues, basically. Go through and A and R, you know, act within the time. Quick report, and there was a dog incident over the weekend, uh, where a couple of dogs got out, attacked their owner, and the report from the dog officer, Shelley Sears, is that the owner has agreed to euthanize the dogs sometime this week, and Shelley and Scott. The police chief will follow up on that and report back to the board. It does bring, I think, a bit of a need, and Don, you brought this up before. Let's keep these on a tickle file because we thought this was all set. And it's unfortunate that it happened, but I'd like to know, maybe quarterly or something like that, is there anything active or has everything been signed off and done? And I think whether it comes from Shelley, from Scott, or a combination of both, that means it, that means it happened. Uh, Bob, do you have an initial report? Yeah, unless it's easier to do it next week or next meeting, up here.
So. All right, say it again, please.
Do you have a initial report? Is nothing urgent that, uh, you can't cover?
Yeah, I gave out the report. I can, uh, just go over a couple of things. Apparently noisy here.
Mr. Jumping, huh, Bob? He muted himself.
Okay.
He muted, Bob.
Okay, I did see the report come in the email and I felt it was, uh, you know, nothing urgent. You know, pretty much a listing of what, things that are going on, so, um, I'll, if you can get a copy, Pam, and just throw it in the minutes. I think that would be sufficient.
Can you not hear me?
Now we can, and we, we love your report and we thank you for giving it.
Okay, sure.
We're going to include, we're going to include the copy you emailed us in the minutes. I think that's.
Right.
Great, anything in there that really needed a lot of, you know? Okay, I think we have an aggressive list for the eleventh, and I would appreciate any suggestions from you all for what's coming on there. If there's a need for any executive sessions going forward, please relay that to Bob.
Vote to adjourn.
I thought you were waiting for him to say.
Oh, I was looking at John Plaster was going to second, right?
John Plaster, South Winton Road, uh, I was.
They can't hear you, John, unless you come up.
John Plaster, South Winton Road.
Full selection.
I was inquiring today about this property on a, a north street in Main Street that's in pretty terrible shape right now. I understand there's no ordinance in town requiring maintenance of property. And, uh, unless the bank or whoever's holding the mortgage, because my understanding is it's in default right now. I don't know any details of that, but I think for a property that's in the middle of town and they were, you know, efforts to try to make this town somewhat unique, Main Street, let that go like it is, I don't agree with it. I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
It's got a historic house too. It's pretty, pretty old.
Yes. They're not, not talking about nailing some boards on the side, just cut the grass. Because someone did tell me that the vision on the corner is somewhat restricted with the high grass.
I think that is in the bylaw, though. You have to be able to see at a certain angle from around a corner.
Last year, I believe, some, either one of the owners had the.
I had asked Mark last year to go by with the sickle bar too and knock it down, you know, from the, you know, the center right of way.
It was knocked down in time for the, uh, for the event.
Didn't last year, I didn't think there was something there, so.
No, I guess I would. Well, actually, one of the owners.
The old owners.
Somebody coming to it, yeah.
Well, I agree. It's just sitting there. It's such a beautiful house. It could be so much more.
Perhaps, uh, have it come from, uh, Mark. Sorry, come home, Wendell, please. Their concern that, you know, code violations, so, yeah. A couple of other things while I'm thinking of it. There's a inspection tie-in bond is coming tomorrow. At what time, Pam? Ten o'clock. They're going to check over Thornton Burgess and the town hall. So if either.
Excuse me, John?
Yes.
Uh, just, while John Plaster is there, would you please, uh, let him know that his access to the town website is now working? I got it fixed today.
Okay. Did I get a new password?
Yeah, don't tell him right now.
Same password.
Okay, guys.
Send it to the email.
Look at your credit card. Thank you. Also, the excavator came into the highway department. So that was ARPA money.
Yeah.
Under budget. There was, uh, that's what's happening there. And we had an open motion from Don.
Oh, yes, um, I will, before I second that, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. And, uh, we'll be back on the eleventh for our next meeting, and I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Are you converting here?